All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To their honor, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting has been hosted in all the normal just periods areas. So we're just looking for motions for the board.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda except eliminating I am A on the agenda. And if you give me a chance to explain, if there's a second to that.
The I am A would be new business number one on the agenda. Yep. Okay, I'll second so you can explain.
Okay. First of all. Having meetings during the middle of the day with items that are. Things that are issues that need discussion takes away from our transparency of the war. If I was in a normal situation, I would have discouraged having a daytime meeting for anything but. I would call it housekeeping type of items like the contract approvals. Second of all, I'm not real keen on any August meetings except for the one monthly meeting because it's the month when most people are on vacation. So for those reasons, I do not want to see this discussed until the 29th meeting.
I would echo that transparency that you did as well, and I can feel as though. Four days earlier for parents, staff, community. Have a discussion about changes to curriculum Tuesday at noon. I think that's challenging to meet a reasonable efforts on transparency. And so I would support this motion to bring that six number one. End of the month, table it to the end. I don't feel that it is the change to curriculum. It's just an opt out for the parents, it doesn't, it's not an add, it's not a subtract, it doesn't affect the curriculum at the school at all. It just gives the parents or community the choice. They're not breaking any policy whatsoever.
Point of order. We're just voting this motion up and down. We're not discussing the item.
Okay. All right, any other, okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda minus six number one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The motion is rejected, three two.
I think the motion is to approve the agenda.
Second. Give the motion second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
I changed my vote. Okay. We're on to delegation speaker. Kathy James, you're up first.
I'm Kathy James, I have four children who have attended school here. My last one is an incoming eighth grader. I appreciate the chance to talk to you about this issue. When I saw it on the agenda, you know, I would, my immediate reaction was, I think it's awesome, appropriate. To allow families to opt in or opt out. But as I thought about it, I was like, well, I, as a parent, I don't really even know if I understand. The details of the curriculum to even make that choice. So I did go to the school district site and I did get some background on it. I knew that this program was, you know, approved years ago. But I, and I don't know if it was just me, but I couldn't figure out how on the website to, you know, dig a little bit deeper and get the information on the curriculum. And I also went to my Samantha and I'm gonna throw her under the bus. And I asked her about, you know, what are, what are the things you've been doing and, you know, how you feel about this? And, and she just said, well, honestly, Mom, I don't think it's been very helpful. And, and so again, if we're, if we're making this decision. It's, it feels to me like it's a bit of a Band-Aid, putting a Band-Aid on something. Well, this is, you know, we're gonna, you know, let people opt in or opt out. And what I really feel we need to be doing is examining the curriculum. And is this what our children need right now? And where I'm also going with this is, on a side note, I have been working through the PTO on a mental health wellness campaign. And I have had, I have interviewed professionals at Children's Hospital, at Rogers Memorial, and the Gaus Institute. And, you know, what I'm hearing is things are different from what they were in 2019 and 2020. And what, and what our children are dealing with right now is a lot of stress, a lot of anxiety. And they don't have the resilience and the coping skills, and this is affecting their school lives. The other thing, if we were to ask them, what's the number two issue right now with children at the ages of our kids? It's self-esteem, and it's mostly self-esteem as it relates to girls, but it does affect everyone. So I, I feel very compelled that, you know, to ask, ask you, the district and the support of the school board. To review this curriculum and see, is this even the right thing right now that our children need? And then the last thing I would ask is whatever the curriculum is, you know, as parents. Can we receive what the lessons are, or, you know, or some, you know, they do that for the health class, kind of. Get a chance to see everything that the kids are going through, so, so as a family, as a parent. That we can support it as well. So thank you.
My next up would be Justice Kathy.
Good afternoon. So I'm here to talk about SCL as well, and I guess for me, it's a little bit of follow-up from my last time coming to speak to the board and to administration about SCL. Because I think I asked a few questions or for some follow-up, and I think this really goes to Kathy's point. And one of the questions I asked, when SCL was adopted and rolled out to our families, what was the communication plan? And at the time, the answer I got, I think you, Ron, asked Ms. Krasky, what did we do? And she said, I don't remember. Okay, so we read you what's on your website of what you guys were going to do. But then obviously, things changed, right? COVID happened. So my, my thought is none of this happened in communicating to the families. So was there a letter sent to all district families about the SCL curriculum in 2019 going into the 2020 school year? Ron. Okay, was there information, was there information available at open house about the district SCL efforts? I don't think there were open houses that year. Was there grade level communication at intermediate school parent information nights? Don't think we had those either. Home link activities with each unit? Are those sent home to parents? As a parent of a fifth grader, I could tell you, they are sent home by some teachers and some teachers do not. And lastly, was there a fall parent information night to roll us out to K through A curriculum? So the answer to all those questions is no, none of this happened. Right? So you ask yourself, did the parents in the community know what this curriculum is? How are they supposed to know? Right? When none of the communication plan was executed by the school. So the reality is people don't know what this is, they don't know if they're getting exposed to it or taught. Right? And that goes back to what I talked about in March. There's zero transparency of what this program's all about, right, or what the initial efforts were for. You know, I scroll further up in the same document, and the members of the team that brought in this SCL program. From what I see, sixty to seventy percent of them are no longer part of the district. Including three, the three board members that were part of the committee are no longer part of the district. And majority of the staff no longer part of the district. So if there's ever a, I mean, I commend the board taking some action, but if, as a parent, I want the whole program to be stopped until it's reevaluated completely. And the community is aware of what's going on. Right? I have gotten access to second step information. After that meeting, the school board, and I was told there was no assessments done about SCL. A month later, my daughter comes home with an assessment. That's interesting, so I reached out to the teacher, they explained to me, Mr. Posick at the time sends me information I need. You can get full access to all the curriculum that the school should be providing parents, and they have now. Right? And so now it's three months, four months later, still nothing from the district whatsoever about SCL. Like, if I recall, it was one of the two parents here during that meeting to raise these questions. So now we're in a moment, and this is more to the board, that you want to stop this agenda item because of transparency? You've got to be kidding me. Right? You should stop the whole program because of transparency. Because your parents in this district have no clue what's going on. Because the district never sent any information home to the families about this program whatsoever. Right? I can go on and on about SCL because I've done a lot of research, right, whether it's second step or other programs. But to me, right now, the whole thing needs to be paused until families get accurate and relevant information about what the program is. What their kids are going to be exposed to, right? What the parameters are that a teacher can talk to the student about and cannot talk to the student about? All those things need to be discussed before this program goes forward. That's all I have. Oh, so those that know, you can go on the website, it's all on there. It's a document posted on the district website that tells you all the communication plan and everything, which none of it happened.
Shell, is it maybe? I didn't, I didn't know what exactly we talked about. And, you know, as a staff member, I have a unique perspective, as a community member, and then as, you know, as a parent. So I just, I'm just kind of coming here just to more listen, I've come to board meetings because people in the media about everything going on. And variety of things, so I just kind of wanted to be aware, be taxpayer, employee, and so that's about all I want to say right now at this point.
Okay. Steven?
Yeah, so a lot of my questions have already kind of been talked about or answered, but my main question is why are we only focusing on the sixth through eighth grade of maybe in October versus mandatory? Why are we not looking for other grade levels as well? I mean, when it hits the, you know, the adult talk, you know, we get the information right away. About for that grade, why are we not giving parents the option to, for their younger kids? Why is it only starting at sixth grade? I mean, Wisconsin doesn't mandate, mandate any SCL. So I'm just curious as to why we're only targeting sixth through eighth grade. And also, I'd like to echo Kathy's just statements about when I was applying for the board and was looking for information. There was not a whole lot of an SCL on the website, so, and this has been going on since 2019. So why was there not more communication towards the parents and community about this? If we're just gonna mandate something and then not tell the parents that, oh yeah, now we're teaching the kids this? And not let them know really what we're teaching them? Thank you.
Great. Feature?
Hi, everyone. I did share this with the board previously, I know it wasn't that much noticed, so sorry that it was just last night. But I'll just kind of stick to it because I don't want to like throw any surprises off of what I already put on there. So I was kind of reading straight forward so that the rest of the community can as well. So first of all, thank you for taking the time to review my questions regarding the special discussion meeting on August 29th, 2022. It is my understanding, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss and possibly take action on the notion of making our district's social emotional learning or SCL curriculum second step. An opt-out program for families. Lower a series of questions and discussion points that I appear that I would like, that I would ask the members of the board to consider speaking to during today's discussion. While I believe that many staff members might have similar questions, I do want to make clear that this is just me, I didn't like, you know, talk about this as my own questions. So not behalf of the staff members. So I have about eight questions, a little bit of information for some of them. So my first one is kind of that around the, like, decision to do this. So it's my understanding that making the decision to make SCL opt-out curriculum is not one that's endorsed by the administrative team. So I would like to hear from the board why they feel the administrative team's professional recommendation is not in the best interest of students' families and the community at large. Why is this being discussed at a special meeting? Is there a reason that this could not have been discussed at the regular scheduled meeting coming up on August 29th? If there is a time constraint, why was this not discussed at the regularly scheduled meeting in July? At the board meeting on July 18th, the board unanimously approved policy 7040, 7040.1, 7041, and 7041.1, I didn't tell those in there. And those policies highlight the rigorous formal process for selecting, implementing, reviewing, and changing the various curriculum of our district. So I'm curious why is the proposed change to the delivery model of the SCL curriculum not being conducted through those policies instead of that kind of random special meeting? In addition to the approved curriculum policies listed in question three, the attached form that I have attached highlights the consistent procedures that already affords any family in the district the right to appeal and object to any content of a board approved curriculum. That was approved last month. And additionally, board policy 37 to section four, which was last and ended in December of 2000, so it's been here for at least 22 years. Highlights the process in which parents can object to their child's participation in specific curriculum instructional material. So my question with all that would be, why does the board feel that second step requires a special opt-out option as opposed to families just following the already established procedures? If they object to their child participating in second step lessons, why don't they just follow that process instead of a new thing? For question five, as families do review the second set materials, chances are likely that they may find some lessons they want their child to experience with their peers and some lessons they would want to opt out of. So my question with that is, would this proposed opt-out option be an all or nothing experience? Or will parents be able to, like, opt in and out of specific lessons that they may or may not want their child to participate in? Is there a specific reason that only families of sixth to eighth graders, to Steven's point, that's a question I have as well. Why would we only afford the right to choose to sixth to eighth grade families as opposed to the entire district? What's the rationale behind that decision to only allow for the specifically mentioned group? As written in the curriculum, there are 26 to 27 lessons for each grade level in second step. And each lesson is approximately 20 to 30 minutes long until delivered weekly for the most part. If families have opted their child out of second step, what will they be doing each week during that time? Who will supervise them and who will be responsible for providing alternate and active material? And then my final question on that is that second step comes with a variety of, like, advisory activities, service projects, class discussion prompts, like, different games and community building activities. So my question around that would be, will the opt-out only apply to the direct second step lessons? Or would students whose families have opted them out also need to be kind of abstained from those community building activities as well? So I recognize that this, you know, being a, like, special meeting is a complete, so I understand we can't discuss it, but I just want to bring this forward. And I hope that during the discussion questions, some of all the board members will consider just speaking to some of those points. I know that we might not agree on social emotional learning, how it should be implemented. But I do appreciate at least understanding some of the questions about the end decisions. So that I can do my job effectively. And at least, you know, be in line with what we're supposed to be doing. So I appreciate your time and consideration, and any input that anyone's willing to offer, I would be grateful to hear.
Put out there anybody else that signed the sheet, but didn't sign that they want to speak, give them one more opportunity if they want to. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to new business.
Okay, number one is our, is the topic of, actually, you know, for sixth through eighth curriculum and the SCL. It's well there too, so this was discussed at a policy meeting as well too, and that's where it got brought forward from the board. The administration is recommending, again, we haven't, I think, right now, we currently have this Band-Aid, we've worked through that. But again, the administrative recommendation would be to pause this discussion, have it go in August to the, at the 29th meeting. As kind of the first discussion point, and then the final discussion point would then occur if decision one to be made in the September meeting, the regular scheduled meeting. The administration does feel that we can pause the SCL learning at sixth through eighth. And we can start that up after a final decision is made, if in fact it's not made today, with the board too as well. Again, I just wanted to kind of, again, where's, where's our rationale for kind of following more of the policy? When we do take a look at the, the curriculum rules, when we take a look at developing and kind of modifying some things under 7040.1. Would be the, the development of the program intent, it's basically the program direction. And then basically kind of that sit number six item, which is continuous improvement, soliciting program feedback, assessing strengths and weaknesses, concerning revising action plans, if in fact we need to as well. So again, that's just kind of looking at our particular policies and about how we go about making these programmatic changes. Again, I would just point to the curriculum development rule that was passed last time too. And again, like was highlighted in the delegations we heard, there is opportunities for families to express their concerns about the program. And opting themselves, their, themselves out of that program through a process that is district approved as well. So, and that's, that's where the administration is recommending. Right now, I don't, we, our administrative team, we, we haven't talked about this, whether or not we, again, to Mr. Kent's comment. A lot of those members of the committee are no longer here, so the board initiative wants to be discussed at the board level, but certainly can do that through a programmatic review for our policies too as well. And plenty of time to, to make that determination with the appropriate feedback and the processing timeline before we move into this.
Turn over the board. I moved the direct administration to create an opt-out form related to social emotional learning, SCL, for sixth through eighth grade, which will be made available for parents both online and in person through the district.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
I'm disappointed that we're doing these things during a daytime meeting. I, I'm as conservative as the rest of you there, and I have my concerns about some of this stuff that comes through SCL. But I am just as discouraged that we are doing these things in a non-traffic area.
I would agree with the morning or the afternoon when it was being made. It was not thought about if it was hard to be here or what time. However, I know all of us as a board and as around, we all were part of making that time, so we could have changed it at any time. It wasn't to be not transparent, it was just logistically to get it all together, so.
And, and the conversation piece, just to kind of echo what Letty was saying, was as Troy brought it up, is the opportunity to have it done simply during registration is when all of our students, and that's, that's the intent of this meeting. Ahead of, ahead of the, the opening of registration, which is on Friday afternoon. That was the discussion in the policy.
Ron, and this goes for the Maria and Steve, Steve, I know you're new, but my general question. Prior to the, this meeting, notice going out, and then two-part question after this meeting notice going out. So prior and after, have you fielded calls, emails, concerns from parents about this curriculum prior to, and not including kind of our discussion that we had in March? So between March and now, did you guys, and Steve, if you want to take a pass, because you're four weeks in, I get it. Have you guys received calls about this particular curriculum or emails or? I have not. Okay. I guess I will pass that question to fellow board members.
I've fielded many concerns.
Okay. What's many, like, could you ballpark? A hundred, over a hundred? And teachers? There's, there's teachers in this building that don't feel that they should be taught and they're teaching about some of these topics, that they're trained properly. They're not going to waste it because they don't want to. Only by other people that look down on and for not agreeing with SCL. And it's kind of ironic that I'm talking about staff bullying staff when we're talking about SCL. It's happened. Did they say specific topics or just kind of generally feel that?
They've got a specific topics.
What are those specific topics? Because I, I haven't received any solicitation on this, and so, just from my knowledge, because again, I was out of town this week, so I'm just curious what it is, is that.
All right, let's, let's take, first off, give you a little background. I have dug into the first half of SCL program, Ron can attest to that. I have spent twenty plus hours going from fourth grade to eighth grade, and lumping it out. I've come, I've sat at his, his office, I've watched videos, I've watched, I've watched everyone. So I've seen it. I'm gonna take eighth grade, and, you know, these are opinions, so everybody's gonna look at things differently. The eighth grade curriculum, so let's talk about bullying, harassment, partiality through a racial lens. That's in lesson 28, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. Talking about LGBTQ, lessons 2, 11, 13, social justice activism. Lessons 7, 11, 12, 13, sex ed. Lessons 21, 25. And then there's more sensitive topics. Talk about bullying, you know, divorce, family illnesses, self-harm, drinking, alcohol, drugs, you know, a lot of, a lot of human growth and development things that are in the curriculum. That's lessons nine, lessons one, nine, 11, 12, 15, 18, 19, 21, 22, 27. It also, in the eighth grade curriculum, it pushes parents a little bit more away from the school system of your child. It doesn't encourage children to go to the parent, which should be the first step of support on any issue overall. It's basically pushing and having your students or your, your children, you know, go to administrators. Band teacher, guitar teacher. Stuff like that, that's lessons one, five, seven, eight, seven, nine, ten, twenty-one, twenty-seven. So those are just a few things I brought up off of the eighth grade curriculum. I feel are sensitive topics. I don't think every family member would want their kids being taught or spoken about some of these subjects in school. I think they want to take you without their time, their, their own homes, the way they want to do it. And I feel giving parents the choice isn't effective. I choose to have my child not part of sixth, seventh, eighth grade SCL, I'm just defending you, I'm just. If I choose to have my child not part of six, seven, eight grade S E L, does it affect your child? It doesn't, it doesn't. Does it affect the teaching, does it affect the staff, it doesn't. So it's the, as far as answering the question as far as why six through eight, I originally said five through eight. Not realizing that the fifth grade follows the.
K through five is a system. Well, K through five is more of a structure, it's K through five is similar, it's six, eight.
So sixth grade is a lot easier to opt out of, because it's actually supposed to be a set schedule. And I found out that K through five, teachers are not doing this as a set schedule, some teachers aren't doing it. Some teachers are weeks behind, and believe me, I followed that because I was asking about parents. And a lot of kids, I follow up and find, okay, what'd you do it, did you call morning meetings?
Morning meetings is a community building, what's the S E L? S E L is the second step, second step, somebody already called, I mean, because
honestly, if you talk to parents in K through five, they don't, you say S E L, kids don't know what you're talking about. Do you have S E L today? It's S E L. So there is a transparency issue with this community too, with this program. It's been in effect for what, four years here?
No, 2020.
Twenty.
Yep, we're going on to our third school year.
And we have no benchmarks.
No, no, it is, it was, it is part of our district dashboard moving forward, it's usually end of the year. Second step assessment, K through eight, it's a run-through, whatever, was highlighted there through the student achievement committee.
When this program was adopted. Born out in nineteen?
Born out in spring of 2020.
Correct, that's what reviewed over the course of a certain year, nineteen twenty.
At that time, was that, was this curriculum reviewed in the lens of our human growth and development, and whether or not it was looking at whether it violates that human growth and development policy?
It was not viewed as human growth and development, correct.
But it was looked at.
It was looked at separately, no, it was looked at separately. It was not looked at anywhere near the lens of human growth and development. It was looked at through the lens of the topics and the, basically, the unit objectives and the themes that are.
No, I get that, but I guess my question took a parallel with. To Troy's point, are there topics at S E L that we only discuss in human growth and development?
I would have to go in, again, I'm assuming Troy isn't making this up, because Troy spent hours and stuff, but if he highlighted, I'd really have to take a look at the context in which. At the time, it was adopted. It was not, it was not measured, it was not benchmarked against human growth and development at the time, no, it wasn't.
Why wouldn't it be? Because if we have a specific policy regarding sensitive subjects such as human growth and development, and we give people this, and there's this in it, why wouldn't it have been viewed, or at least looked at as like, okay, if there's topics here that overlap with this, do we need to pull those topics out, or make it an opt-out, opt-in type scenario? I think that's a legitimate point, when it comes to human growth and development, I think that's a legitimate point.
And I can't answer that outside of we did do that.
And as far as the adult, again, if I understand what you spoke about that, and with second step, we, it's a lease program, or it's a five-year program, it's copyrighted, so it's not like human growth and development where our parents can go online and view it, we're not allowed to.
Correct.
Put that online, but a parent, like I said, like I did personally, is welcome to come in and you pull it, if you want.
It's not allowed because.
So you can't.
Copyright. Yeah. So we can't, yeah, so that's why we can't offer it out. We can also offer the parents.
I want to say, Andrew, back to your original question, how many people have reached out? I wasn't here in March, my first month. I have heard from both sides in the last week since, or four days, five days since the meeting was announced. I've heard from both sides, I've heard, what's the urgency? Probably ten people or so. One that resonated with me, I won't share the parent's name, she was concerned about some of the heavier matters that gets in the eighth grade as they just had a, they're dealing with it as a family right now, something that comes up in the eighth grade curriculum, and she really felt that that would upset their child, that would really, the way they're dealing with it at home, she doesn't want it to be dealt with at school, because they're still processing, it's still very raw. So she shared with me that she would appreciate the choice, and that was kind of the majority, but about ten people between staff and families.
My question is for our administration, and why did it take you this long to get information out there? Why isn't this more transparent, especially since we had a discussion in March where it was me that brought it out about just wanting to learn more about it, and it's still not out there. And I know that you can't put the exact lessons out there, but we for sure, we could be having the topics out there, like, this is the topic to talk in sixth grade at this time. Those papers should have been going home. Where, why didn't we do these things? We did it just, our administration did it just to justice to our families by not sharing this information. So I'm just curious, what is the administration's reasoning for not sharing?
First of all, we want to share, even our expectation moving forward would be all the home links, the two parent letters that go out ahead of time at the seventh and the eighth grade level surrounding bullying, particularly, that's when it's a parent letter, so those, we are going to make sure that they do go out in a consistent manner, instead of it being teacher-dependent, making sure that that information is being shared as well.
I don't know what you want to do in the future, I'm just curious what our decision-making was since we started this program, not to be very transparent about it.
It wasn't intentional, it was not intentional, it was not something the administration was trying to stand behind and say, we're working with old misinformation. That was not our intent, there will be follow-through with that too, and clear expectations moving forward to make sure that all communication is sent home in a timely manner, as well as consistently.
That's important for our community, that's a lot of things that I heard, was that it felt like the administration was hiding from it.
But the topics are all listed on our website, about what it is we are talking about, the topics, the things. If we do take a look at the topics, looking at the scope and sequence, and so for instance, you highlighted for eighth grade.
I can do eighth grade.
Lessons you want.
Recognizing, unit two, lesson eight, recognizing bullying and harassment.
That's under what?
So. Right, yeah. Yeah, so that would.
That's going to be, right, but this might be, this would be the sheet that we were supposed, the administration was supposed to set up.
Because, one, you know, their focus on this is aggressive, aggression against someone based on three or seven characteristics, such as race, religion, sex, and/or gender.
Right, and that is, that's, but, that's not a human growth and development topic.
Oh, it can get into there.
By a perceived notion or stereotype around somebody's gender identity or race, probably.
I mean, it's a lot of Title VII protected categories, race, religion, sex, and gender.
Right, and we're highlighting that.
Yeah, but it's, there's a lot of focus on that.
And I could get a copy of that.
And this is a focus on that. Instead of a lot of issues that we have in this area, possibly, kids are picked on because of their height, because of their weight, because of where they live, what kind of car they got, we need to be focused on that, that too, not focus on you.
I'm sure, I would hope that would cover, you know, teasing bullying in a broad term that would just need to be addressed.
But if you follow their guideline, it's more than that.
Right, and those are Title VII things that we need to be aware of, that we do not discriminate based on sex, gender, identity, or anything else like that too as well.
Right, yeah, we're focusing on Title VII.
I have a good question, or delivery?
Go ahead.
Ron, have you heard those specific items that Troy shared with us about the different lessons that were there before this afternoon meeting?
No, that's what I'd like to, what I did hear from Troy was, I heard from Troy about there were two letters as it relates to what we didn't share with those, but I'd like to see the context of the, I didn't hear about the where they talk about sexual identity, where we talk about with Title VII and stuff, or whatever it might be as well. So that's why I'd like to kind of look into the context of those. Yeah, that's true, that's great, I just would love to see it, that we can take a look at what's in lessons two, eight, twelve, or whatever it might be as well.
That's what I feel right now, parents, parents need the traits, the fundamental rights, but.
Right, but I am just kind of going back into communication, and you know, you kind of chuckled a little bit as it relates to what we do teach, and I'll take a look at fifth grade, you know, unit one is empathy and respect, listening with attention, being assertive, predicting feelings, so that stuff is all here, and it talks about what the unit objectives are in the lesson concepts from K through five to six, eight. Again, we got objectives, and when there's themes and stuff like that, but we certainly can go back and take a look at it, and to your point, as those things were highlighted, we can go back and, to your comment, we can certainly, I can sit down with Troy, we can review those lessons and what they talk about in that context to see if in fact we do have an issue with our human growth and development content. So I have not heard that until now.
And I would just bring up, if that happens to be the case, then we have very specific action steps that are outside even the board's purview on state statute to relook at any of those items. And I wasn't here, so I can't say, but that would be us opening and doing a human growth and development full-on. There's no part way for that, so I just want to clarify. So if we happen to find something, then that's what we would be required to do.
To look at our entire human growth and development, is that what you're saying?
Right, there's no like little partial way, they're very explicit in law.
Okay.
That if you offer human growth and development, what the makeup of that committee is, how does it run, and the decisions that revolve around that?
What is a full timeline or something like that?
Usually districts take a full year, because human growth and development tends to be a very hot topic between a lot of people, and it engages a lot of stakeholders in something like that. That would be like a normal process. The last couple times I did it, which was twice, it takes quite a lot of time. My most concern about would be the district's capacity as we're running other reviews over how we prioritize that for next year. Because frankly, we don't have a lot of substitute or time right now, because we still to do a lot of our curriculum work, so that would be something we'd probably have to talk as a board over what would come off, or what we would do, not because Maria doesn't, but we don't physically have the support structure and substitute and time to manage everything that we would have wanted to do then. But I just, I just throw that out, because it's my job to let you know what, what the ramifications are, depending on what we.
So we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of giving parents an option to opt out by a form on the website?
Through registration.
Through registration.
Registration.
Online, and in person. All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Hi.
I also just because we were doing this.
Great, all right, it'll be on registration for six through eight grade, okay. Dean, can you finish the meeting for me, I need to run to an appointment that I already scheduled with you.
Sure, I can, okay. I'm, yes, I'm a. I'm Chris. Oh, okay, and then I'm going to hand Ron some questions I have on this next topic, if you can answer them, and I'll watch the YouTube later. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to new business. Item two.
Okay, so the personnel committee, it was discussed that we would, and I, again, it's recommended that as we enter into our final year of our strategic plan, that we begin to create, obviously, we're going to have to work on that this upcoming winter and spring, but to kind of get a statistic and try to see what our climate culture is, our workforce engagement, as we continue to really work towards our strategic plan two as well. We have, Troy did some legwork and did, you know, communicate with one organization, D S B, that does this, and again, they did create a quote for us and kind of talked a little bit about what it is that they would do, and I did. The board packet is also included in the agenda, so you'll see that in the board packet as well. So any other comments on that before we get to, I have some questions from Andrew. Okay, that was a very much a topic of, during the personnel committee, Dean was present too as well, during this conversation as well. So in this questions, it's got a few of, how many firms would be solicit quotes from? Just the one that we gathered.
Which, which you said that.
Which, yeah, it is a very good price for the work that they would be, they would be working through. The process that they would is, it would be the personnel committee, we would homegrown the questions, and then also there would be some face-to-face meetings with the organization, and one of those, I don't think with the personnel committee, but also the possibility of bringing the firm into and talking to our staff, so they understand all the way from the confidentiality component to what it is that they're, we're really trying to measure, so what their, what their role is in this too as well. So again, we have not solicited any quotes. What were the quoted rates, and what do you get from each team? We didn't get any more from other organizations as well. Do we ask and call for references? I do not do that, this is something that we can talk about. The proposal referenced no more than fifteen questions, what's the rationale around that? Again, I think what I would recommend us to do is, is we create a survey, if it's over fifteen, it might have to tweak that cost too, because obviously more questions require more data mining, crunchy, and just more application to that if in fact we get over fifteen. But again, I guess as the personnel committee needs to really create the survey, I guess those questions will be answered at that time. And have any of you personally worked with these firms? Another question is, will you be making a formal recommendation to the board for approval? That would be up to the board if they would like to do that. The quote, even if we did go, went over, it's well under $5,000, so per policy, in theory, it would not have to get out. Per policy and things like that, but again, the board can either make a formal, and again, it's not, I don't have it as an action item, it just wasn't updated today, so no formal action, but the board could direct, if it's the will of the board, direct the administration to begin to engage D S B, if that's the will of the board too as well. And I have not engaged D S B yet, from that standpoint. Another question was from the board questions that were highlighted in the proposal, are these standard or normal, or normal and customary questions that are passed on school climate and culture surveys? We were, as part of our discussion, is, is I was going to bring some questions that we've used in the past, and those questions would have come from the company called Synergy, which is the general central top workplace, that is what we used back in 2016 when we started our strategic plan, so we would have those examples. I also will be collecting some other staff climate and survey examples to show to the board, or the committee, to be able to create that survey, and then ultimately, any other questions that either our team creates, or comes up with, or does some research, or things we want to ask, so, could be, you know, again, it can be anything that, if you really decide it to be, but I will bring examples of former and current climate and culture surveys for staff as well. The last question is, can the board slash maybe get a final update on the exact question? The last question is, can the board slash community get a final update on the exact questions being asked? Certainly, I mean, it's going to be something that's going to be open record. It will be created and crafted such that hopefully it's very simple to, if it is open record request, to redact. But again, it would be something that would be very openly transparent to be able to give that, that feedback and be shared with the community if they want to. Our staff obviously will take it, obviously the school board, the personnel committee, anybody who would like to participate in that from a board level is more than welcome to as well. So I kind of highlighted some of those answers, which are very good questions. Or anything else to add from the, the, the folks who were there or the intent of the survey at all or? Did I kind of highlight some of the?
Just that the intent is that it is anonymous and I guess as an open records request that would be in regards to the results is what.
To the results, correct. Yep, to the results, they would, if the record does exist, then we just would be going through the open record requests and then the redaction, if anything, we need to be reactive. For state statute.
Doing a homegrown.
Benchmarks. Yep, 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 we would be, yeah, exactly. The, the group, well, the group was to go with a homegrown. And again, those homegrown will be created, but again, we'll take some questions. But again, we will not be able to benchmark it against other school districts or organizations our size or similar to us. It just would be, and again, I think we did talk about too, and something that obviously can be finalized, this can be something that can be done over and over. As we start to talk about that continuous improvement of, and again, let's take a look at what the data tells us, let's put some plans to improve it. And then we can, you know, take monetary steps to continue to see how we're doing as it relates to some of those target areas we might want to target to improve on.
Okay, is there any more to the chat? Direction for? Dr. Rob?
Well, I got it from my, I'm reading that it's the will, the will before.
That's what I can see. With, with D S B, with D S B. Yep, that seemed to be the will of the board. Hearing that, that's not the will of the board. We'll move forward with it. Okay, all right. Then my next. Yep. So just so I'm clear, my, my next steps on this agenda are to communicate with D S B and to set up, get some possible dates. And then I'll communicate that back out to the personnel committee for us to have our first meeting for that too. Okay. All right, thanks. We have personnel actions. We have two resignations. We'd like to present a big thank you to Jackie Cryeski and Melissa Seebu. Jackie was with us for eleven years and Melissa was with us for two years. So just looking for a motion to approve the letters of resignation by Jackie Cryeski and Melissa Seebu as presented.
A move as presented.
We have a motion in a second, is there any?
Just, I wanted to say thank you to Jackie for being my lead with me advisor at last.
Okay, all in favor, then say aye. All in favor, aye. All in the carry.
All right, so we have three individual teacher contracts that the administration is proposing to the board for consideration. We have, the first is Amy Anderson to replace Melissa Seebu in the sixth through eighth science. Mrs. Anderson is coming to us with eight years of total experience and the most recent coming from Grafton. We've had an increase in our five K numbers and we are going to be adding a five K section. And Lisa Demas is going to be, will be passed to five K. And to replace her in fourth grade, we have Megan Finn. Megan is coming to us from Houston, with five years of experience teaching grades three through five. So again, would like to propose her individual contract. And then finally, lastly, we have Jenny Mattson. Jenny was a part-time guidance counselor for us. When we've posted Jackie Cryeski's part-time guidance counselor position, we got a total of zero applicants. So Jenny has agreed for, for this upcoming year to go full-time to help fill that void. Again, our administrative team will be reworking that job description because we, we have the equivalent of about one point four guidance counselors. And now we're going to be reducing to one point oh. But Jenny will be here every day working in that full-time capacity. So again, our administrative team will work on what that looks like and we're very thankful that she's going to take this on for this upcoming year too as well. So the three individual teacher contracts, again, would like to, like the board to make a motion to approve individual teaching contracts for Amy Anderson, Megan Finn and Jennifer Mattson as presented.
We have a motion in a second, is there any? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, aye. All in the carry. All in favor, then say aye. All in favor, aye. Meeting adjourned.